America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual, with liberty and justice.
All right. John, we'll do this this evening, but we still have a forum, so we're good there. And the regular agenda. Anybody got any additions or corrections? Entertaining motion to accept as is.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Justice motion, Brandon's the second. I'll favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consent agenda. Kind of look through there anything last minute there Jim we need to be aware of otherwise?
No, the only thing that I just want to point out was the decreased contract with the preview, we underran in some of the oil and so we have a decrease there of almost seventeen thousand dollars.
Which one was that?
Preview overlay, the final lift, the balancing change order.
That's not this one.
Next, it's the, yeah, well, I put them, it's that one there. That's a decrease, so we underran that project.
What?
Yeah.
I know, I did hear twice.
I gotta do that again, I don't do that very often, we under, under run?
Yep.
That's impressive, I like that, I like it. I prefer it. And now for something completely different.
Exactly, all right. Anybody got, any other questions?
So, now because of the under run, we bonded for the full amount, so.
This one was done in, bond was done in two thousand fifteen, so there was some extra cash in there, but I don't know what the amount is that's left over, that's something that Brenton and Becky were working on.
Typically with an under run like this, that that money get applied to the.
This one.
Or just keep it in there in case there's any.
There is not enough money in the assessment district where we had left over to cover the whole thing. So what council approved was to have the highway fund absorb the rest of that, because it was something that needed to occur, and to come back and hit the residents for special assessment where it should have occurred years ago, wasn't be as appropriate, so we did not do a new assessment district to do that overlay, we just used the remaining funds and then any differences.
Sure.
They mattered.
Okay, any other questions?
No unusual bills this month, I didn't see anything, but.
No.
I think I was gonna question or ask about it, we should, now that we've changed some of our, we're starting to conversion of a lot of our street lights to LED, right? So it'll be interesting to see if our overall electric bill goes down or not. I don't know when we would start seeing that, if that's already happened, or if that's.
Or you haven't had them up for a month yet, so. You also had a lot of new lights added.
Right.
So I don't think we'll see, yeah, I don't think you're gonna see a D varies.
Do you have a general, so the six thousand one hundred and seventy-nine dollars was electricity we spend on a monthly basis related to streetlights in the city, is that a correct statement or is that?
Well, that, that was the water pumps. Our primary expense.
Oh, there is lift stations in there, okay.
Yep. Our primary expense for electric is streetlights, but we do have other expenses, your lift stations, say hall, the shop, so.
Okay.
But the biggest expense is streetlights.
Okay. Okay, any other questions, concerns, or those wanting to entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as is?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Motion, Brandon's the second. Okay, I'll favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, minutes from the November fourth meeting. Double check, I don't see anything on there that's.
Make a motion to accept the minutes from the November fourth election as.
Okay. David made a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Justice does a second. Okay, I'll favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, in our respective meeting that we had on the seventh.
Please stand, so, most approve.
Yeah. Okay, Brandon does a motion to approve, can I get a second?
Second.
Justice does a second, okay, I'll favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, to the public comment period, anybody got anything they want to talk about this evening? Going once, going twice, all right, move on. Sheriff's update.
We had a last time.
We, that's fine, we can just remove it.
Yep, all right, we'll move on, 'cause that's.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's all right.
All right, so Cass County, multi-hazard mitigation plan, MICH. See here, see there, see.
I do not see MICH. Just a quick summary of what this is, is hazard mitigation plan does cover, so basically any disaster or hazardous event that you could have, anything you could possibly think of that's intent of, and how can the county mitigate or prevent those types of activities? Also, what, how do you respond to them? This is critical when it comes to having access to FEMA funds, so that's why the county has been doing, or did this update, been working on this for, I believe, a little over a year, year and a half, so if you want to see a long copy of it, Brian brought it up, I also have a printout of it.
So it's posted on SharePoint or.
It's posted on SharePoint, it'll be posted on the county's website once it's all approved, I believe, probably is even up for public comment and everything now, but what they're doing is presenting it to the different communities, just saying, looking for resolution support. Horace has very little involvement in this, there really wasn't much for us at this time, obviously because the flooding issues aren't the main spotlight in Horace compared to other communities around Cass County with the Cheyenne diversion, and a lot of areas that are not, or undeveloped is where you would see flooding typically, as you're right now. The developed areas isn't as significant as throughout the rest of the county, but they are looking for a resolution of support from the city of Horace, if we're willing to give one, like I said, the initial review of this, I didn't see any, any issues of doing so.
Yeah, 'cause they, I think, didn't they have a draft of this?
It is a while back.
Yeah, I was gonna say, six months ago.
I think it went before you guys too.
That's what I'm thinking, I think we've seen this before, I just didn't.
You saw the inserts, I believe, of just Horace.
Probably, yeah.
It's a fairly.
Yeah, well, I see that, it's thick, but I.
Two hundred eighty-some pages.
I just remember.
Looks like there's maybe three, four pages for Horace that actually matter.
Did you want to adjust the names under Horace? It has Matt and it has period.
I would, you know, we could ask them to update, or just say position.
Yeah, sure.
Ask them to do that.
Sure.
I don't think it matters, but I think they had an error on our setback from Drake, and he's like, and the numbers. Go back, up. No, the other direction.
Yeah, three pages for our portion.
Press, if you want me to go up?
Oh, sorry, did you want me to look at certain?
Yeah, go back, go back, uh. Hold there. Just under flooding, the land along, no, right there, the land along requires a hundred and fifty-foot setback, that's not true, we have, we have a hundred and fifty feet. I don't know if it matters, I just don't want it to be published anyplace which is lower than what it actually is.
Let's see, you know, there's a correction, you put on there.
Yeah. Because otherwise somebody's gonna show up in front of us someday and show us that and use it as some justification.
When they do say the next, under geological hazards, they do say a hundred and fifty feet, so it looks like it's a typo.
Okay.
But we'll, we'll point it out to them.
All right, so they're just looking at, is there a resolution?
It's just a resolution, there's a.
There's another form on.
Yeah, there's a resolution, copying the resolution, if you'd like, I could read it to you really quick, it says, whereas the city of Horace recognizes the threat of natural manmade or technological hazards posed to people and property within, within our community, and whereas undertaking hazard mitigation actions will reduce and or eliminate the potential of harm for, to people and property from future hazard occurrences, and whereas an adopted multi-hazard mitigation plan is required as a condition of future funding for mitigation projects under multiple federal emergency management agency, or FEMA, pre and post disaster mitigation grant programs, and whereas, say a horse participated in the preparation of this plan in accordance with the Disaster Mitigation Act two thousand, and whereas adoption of the Cass County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan demonstrates commitment to hazard mitigation, and now therefore, be it resolved, the city of Horace adopts the Cass County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan as approved by the FEMA, signed, and we enter the date. So basically, we need to have this support in order to be eligible for FEMA funding. The county has to have this plan in place to be able to FEMA, and this helps our case to be eligible for that funding also.
Seems pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
We have to do this, so make a motion to approve the resolution to support the hazard mitigation.
Along with updates and corrections.
With, with said, noted corrections, yes, correct.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, Brandon makes a motion, David's the second, okay, I'll favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Okay, on to the next one, Wild's twentieth edition, Lucas, you've got that one.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the first and I believe only item that I have tonight is a request from the landowners or property owners of Lot One and Lot Two of Block One, Altenberg Acres First Edition, and Lot One, Block Two of Altenberg Acres First Edition, the request being to move right of way that's located on their property to accommodate the horse barns that they have constructed on their property, in front of you, you will have basically a packet of maps, the first being basically a Google Earth map of the property, so you can kind of get an idea of where it's located, this is west of the city and north of sixty-fourth Avenue, directly south of West Fargo, so it's on the west side of the Cheyenne, next to Greyhawk, so that's the, that's the first map, is the Google Earth to kind of show you where it is. The second standalone map that faces, it's like portrait image that faces north and south, that shows where the right of way is located and where the proposed location is being moved, so that looks like this, if you have this in front of you?
Yep.
So, the actual, the one that has a clear line, the proposed change is the one with the diagonal process.
So the proposed basically brings it from, let me just take this layer off so that you can see, so the proposed is to bring it essentially from right here over to this line right here, right along this line?
Yep, yep, correct.
So it's, it's kind of a, kind of a arc right here and over here.
Yes. And so, the, the last item in that packet is the plat that was recorded for Altenberg Acres First Edition, that kind of shows you where the, the right of way is located, that looks like this. So that shows where the existing right of way is, and again, this is a request from the property owner, we met, city officials, engineering legal, and administrative representation met with the applicant's attorney or the requestor's attorney, we had a couple meetings earlier this year to kind of discuss this, and then to discuss proposed alternative routes, we then met with the city of West Fargo and their engineering planning and administrative department to discuss the plating that's really driving this requested change, and that's the Wild's twentieth edition in West Fargo, so what they want to know, what West Fargo wants to know is Horace, where, where do you guys want this road? And so at that meeting, it was discussed between the non-decision makers that it would probably be best if it just ran straight, and we said at that meeting that we would bring this to the Horace Planning Commission and the Horace City Council, as you guys are the decision makers on this matter, but like I said, at that meeting, both sides thought it was best just to leave it as it is, we then took that recommendation to the planning commission, the planning commission met last Tuesday, actually both planning commissions met last Tuesday, Horace Planning Commission agreed just to leave it where it is, they thought, you know, that's the, the best route, there's no reason in pushing this additional right of way on the backside of the individual to the west on their property, because then they'll be surrounded by right of way, and then the West Fargo Planning Commission approved the preliminary plat with the route staying the same at their meeting last week. So like I said, there was a discussion with the applicant or the requestor's attorney at last week's planning commission meeting, Jordan Weir is their attorney, he's here today to discuss this matter now with the city council, and we're gonna leave it up to you guys, again, in the future, I recommend that a situation like this goes to you guys at the public comment period, and you direct city staff on how you'd like to handle these matters in the future, but like I said, this is the one where we met, and, and we had told them early on in this year that this is kind of the route that we would take with this one, and, and so we're being true to our word and bringing it in front of the planning commission and now the city council.
Okay, so, Mr. Weir, if you say a few words.
Thank you, mind if I stand up? Yep.
We'd like you to stand up, so.
Do they have the plat in their packet?
Yes.
They have the original plat, okay. Yes, thank you. Okay, great. So, some additional background, planning and zoning commission discussed last week as well, this plat was actually done prior to, the plat being the Altenberg Acres plat you have in front of you, was done prior to it being dedicated to the public before my clients owned the property, and my clients bought it in nineteen ninety-eight, it was platted, as you can see from the stamp of the commission in nineteen ninety-six, and the horse barn was already built by nineteen ninety-six at that point, so my folks bought the barn, bought the land to the west as well, my clients did not.
This line here, or?
I'm sorry?
This line, the, this.
Yeah, so they own all three of those lots.
Three of these lots right here.
Yep, those three lots.
That's basically Block Two, Lot One.
Right, and then Block One.
And then Block, all of Block One.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay.
So, my, my clients aren't legal minds, they're not realtors, they're not real estate, they're into, my clients, they, they, they show horses, they employ the guy, his name's Brett Clark, and his wife, Jana Clark, run the operation out of that horse barn, and Brett has done that for the last twenty years, Clark Performance Horses. Brett and Jana would be here, but are currently in Oklahoma City for the UHA World Show, before that, they were in Columbus, Ohio for the largest quarter horse show in the world, so obviously it's a fairly serious operation, they have clients from San Antonio, Texas, all the way to Lincoln, Nebraska, to Minneapolis, and of course, in Fargo, along with my clients who are customers of Brett and Jana. My clients did not understand this setup, okay, what you see in this, what you see in this plat, they got their first word about this, there being a proposal for a road, and the idea that the, the city of Horace thought there was a roadway through the, through their property, through their pasture, in December of this year, and their contractor actually looking to put a, actually looking to proposal or provide proposal for Fifty Second Avenue South construction that's been ongoing, he was looking to move a bunch of dirt that was on the West Fargo property, on the developer's land up there, through, and he thought he had a creative way to get that through and, and had brought that proposal, and at that time, the idea was that there'd be a, a truckload after truckload going through there, and then there's a roadway, so we bring up the plat that they haven't looked at for over twenty years, and, and see this, this idea, so, you know, at this point in time, we're trying to come up with some kind of, some kind of idea or some kind of consideration so we can avoid what will undoubtedly be a significant impact on the horse operation, it'll be, it'll sever the land that they have, their operation uses the lot to the west, you wouldn't bring these horses across any kind of residential roadway, aside from that, you have a disturbance of not only the pasture, but the barn itself, it's a significant investment that my clients have had in the, in the community for the last twenty-plus years, we're hoping for some alternative here, we recognize there are a number of other considerations the city council has to consider, including the impact on other, other residents around, the proposal, I had to correct Lucas on one, one aspect here, the proposal that you have of that curve, and I think you have a map in front of you of, of what the developers provided, that was the developers' proposal to curve it essentially all the way to the west, the far west of my client's land, and I, I assume.
Basically right along here.
Right, so he, he proposes.
He proposes to curve it all the way back so that it comes along here, and I assume he did that because he's, I suppose, looking at, at, at not affecting the middle, but frankly, my clients aren't as concerned about the west edge of the property as they are concerned about the pasture land you see here, as well as proximity to the barn, so, something that's was a difference, well, you know, it, it honestly wouldn't make any difference to my clients, other than just trying to, trying to avoid a direct impact on the, the operation, if there are other considerations, I think, from my sense of
the thing here, you know, Brenton and, and Lucas are a bit hamstrung as well, because we can't talk about how this is going to be paid for, any other considerations, another problem is that my client's well that services the entire property and the home that Brett and Jana live on, which is this piece here, is up here, and it has some fairly old pipes that service the rest of the property that would then be, you know, obviously impacted by this construction, we have a timeline that's not drawn by the city of Horace either, we have a timeline directed by the city of West Fargo upon the developer, so there's a lot of moving pieces here, but at this point in time, my clients are left with, well, you have a roadway that's coming through, that's going to impact their property, we're hoping for an alternative, if, if there's no alternative there, is there any other consideration, any other, any other way to address their concerns over the impact on their property, as well as potentially the financial detriment they're going to suffer, for a road that's not going to benefit them in the least for their operation, and in fact, will, will harm their operation, so we'd request, I mean, in, in general, some consideration be paid to, and some alternative be considered by the city, if that consideration were to follow the developers' proposed, that's fine, I think, from my perspective, this, this shouldn't happen until we have brought it for, I mean, full public comment and some notice paid, prior meetings, been told to me, or I've been informed, that it's been discussed by the city in the past, years ago, to vacate that road, what the city thinks is a roadway, it's been discussed that there's issue with building this high school, and you know what's, what's going to bring to the rest of the community, my clients haven't been involved in any of those discussions, so at the very least, we'd like to be involved in any of such discussions going forward, even if the city are is to just press on with a proposal here, we, I, I don't want my clients put into a corner where they're looking at the prospect of paying for the road, or paying for a part of the road.
We're not even there yet, we're not even there on that part, we're, we're, right now, tonight, we're discussing where the existence, where this roadway is gonna go, paying for it, and all of that stuff is gonna be down the road, I don't know.
And that's what, and that's what Brenton and, and Lucas have made clear to me, I, what I, what I suggest is that.
Let's not waste time tonight talking about that part of it, tonight, we're gonna be discussing about the roadways, from my understanding.
Sure, and it's not a waste of time to my clients, but that's, that's all that I have to offer.
Hey, Russ, you wanna give us a, what did you guys talk about in planning and zoning, you've been down this road?
You see the, the, the two houses to the west of their prop, of, yeah, those?
Yep.
Okay, we have another right of way through there.
Agreed, I know.
We're not, we don't want to surround that individual in the, right there, we don't want to surround him with two right of ways, because in the future, odds are, it's kind of like, I know, it's, it's off topic, it's kind of like my property, in the future, there's probably gonna be a road through my property where I live, my heirs will probably be dealing with it, but there isn't any right of way there, but we have right of way here, and the question that came up, actually, it was asked by West Fargo a few years back, Jimmy was dealing with their engineers, and they wanted to know if we had any plans to vacate the road right away.
Yeah, I remember that.
And, and the answer was no, and we don't, we don't want to put it right next to the other place.
Right.
And we, and frankly, I don't want it to move it to the east either, having to do with how it's gonna eventually line up with the road leading down to sixty-four, from sixty-fourth down to seventy-sixth, we will make that in the future a major intersection.
You mean, going beyond here?
Oh, yeah, going south.
Right.
Right.
Down to seventy-sixth.
That right of way is basically right in the middle.
North, south, or other than the diverted road over here?
Other than the diversion road, you know, yes, someday, when you guys are old and gray, that, that diversion road will probably happen.
But that, if you continue that existing right of way down, that's right in the middle of the field, so yes, that would be a major collector road to developments going up on.
Totally.
West side of, of the, of the river.
Yes.
Yep.
Right now, it's not platted.
Yeah, there's nothing in there, but as soon, as soon as that, as soon as we start dealing with the plat, it'll work the same way that we just, we are just working on the preliminary plat for sixty-sixth street, it'll happen in the plating process.
And when West Fargo was planning this section here, that's what's in their proposal for Wild's twelfth, right? And they do have a plan for this to be a through street as well, according to that, the, the proposed their layout right now, right?
I don't know, I haven't seen their plat.
Well, it looks like this has already been.
That's supposed to be Wild's twentieth.
This plan right here, so it, it looks like they've got it laid out as if that's gonna be another through street.
Yeah, yeah, I understand, at least what was indicated to us from West Fargo South is, it would eventually connect, you'd have the continuation eleventh and continuation ninth, ninth is what you see right in front of you.
And that's what this is.
What we're discussing is continuation.
And ninth is the important one to us, because it, it's, it's a collector street now, in other words, there's no driveways on that, we're, that's gonna give us access to Fifty Second.
Right.
It also gives them access down here to get to the schools.
And that's, well, for all intents and purposes, this has been a collector street since along, that's been on the plans since ninety-six, right? And we, I, I mean, we've had discussions on this since we got along, right, so this, this has been, this has been a discussion with West Fargo multiple times, that they, when they started talking about Wild's twelve, that this was going to be a connector, because they wanted to, you know, wanted to use that as a collector road to sixty-four.
So your clients weren't aware, or when they built this property here?
They didn't build the barn, and they weren't aware of it when they bought it. The barn was built before it was platted in ninety-six, and then my clients bought it, the three lots in ninety-eight, weren't aware of it, weren't aware of any discussions relating to right of way or anything of that nature, weren't notified of any of those discussions, should they have been had, until they actually, again, they, they got a word from the contractor in December this year.
That would have been a plat, when we bought the land, I mean, we'd go through a title search, and it would have been on the plat.
That is strange, that, you know, if they didn't see this, then that was amiss by whoever the title.
Yeah, whoever, whoever, or the attorney at the time, because that's just standard procedure, that's what I'm failing to understand here.
Back then, and ninety, if this was approved back then, so, I.
I'm finding it hard to change the road.
It's been on our zoning maps.
Yeah, that's what I mean, this has been.
That's a long time.
I mean, I feel sorry for your clients.
I mean, my clients don't make a habit of checking zoning maps, but, nor do I, frankly.
I get it, I get it.
In any event.
Well, when you're buying property, though, this would be very important.
That's, yeah, I mean, that's.
The, the plat?
Yeah.
Sure.
Sure.
And, and, I mean, like I said, with a proposal from my folks isn't to move it all the way to the west, in fact, we've talked about the road coming through what is also roadway on the east side of the property, or somehow splitting the difference, because they, I mean, the pasture is less affected on.
Bring the road here?
Right.
To, to give you an idea.
But then that goes, I mean, what Brenton and Lucas talked about, is that mean you're talking about five, six? But then that goes, I mean, what Brenton and Lucas talked about, is that mean you're talking about five, six homes there?
Well, this is actually drainage, this is a drainage ditch.
It, it is a roadway.
This is roadway anyway as well.
However, if you were to go there from the east side of that barn to the beginning of the right-of-way to the east, where you are right now there, Brian, that is approximately 350 feet. If you go from the barn to the west to the right-of-way we're talking about continuing to 9th, that's about 400 feet. So it's actually bringing a road closer to the barn. If you move it to the east, so.
Right, you, you have.
400, 350 or 400 feet either direction is what you're talking about, based on, just zooming in on CAS County's GIS there.
Man, no, Jordan, I'm, I'm not inclined to want to override planning and zoning on this. I mean, the plat was done prior. I mean, I, I feel sorry for your clients on this one, but that's something that should have been, when they bought the property, I mean, you get a plat, you should have access to a plat in a title search, you know, so that they see this kind of stuff. I mean, this has happened in other jurisdictions, this isn't unique, but I don't know. What do you guys think?
Yeah, it went through the other entities without passing, so I.
I mean, it was FIMO.
And, and West Fargo also, West Fargo planning, I mean, recommended no changes at all?
You know what you said there, Lucas?
Yeah, on Tuesday, that's the planning commission.
Just if I may, just a few quick seconds, and I know, I don't want to waste your time, but again, this is all important and it all impacts. I guess my clients are looking for some certainty, obviously seeing the, reading the tea leaves from last week. You know, they're, they're prepared, obviously, to, for the, what might be coming down. But in addition to this, they're also consider, I mean, are, are they going to have to pay for a roadway for a property that's not conducting and?
We've not gotten to that discussion.
Yep, yep, and my, my request was, again, is just that we come to that discussion sooner rather than later and that my clients would be involved in, just get some prior notice.
Right, absolutely.
Yeah.
So if there is an improvement, a street improvement district for that and, and the city is going to be assessing that out, your clients will absolutely be notified or something like that because it's, it's going to impact them and they have the opportunity to protest that improvement district. So to answer your question in short, if that is the route that they take, then yes, your clients will have that opportunity to protest the improvement district.
Okay. Any other questions, guys?
Is there, so the action is to just say whether we're, we need to, is there an action, Lucas, or we need to?
So the, the planning commission's motion was just to keep the, the road right-of-way as it is.
So I would make a motion that we keep the planning right-of-way as is.
Okay, so Brian makes a motion to keep the planning as is. Chelsea gives a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joel, you got in here just at the right time. Welcome to ours. All right. Go, go for it. You'll have to make a beep sound when you want Brian to switch it.
All right, sounds good. Mayor, honorable council members, thank you for having me. My name is Joel Paulson. I'm the executive director for the Diversion Authority. I'm here to, tonight to talk to you about a proposed environmental mitigation change for our project and how it may affect the Horace diversion and the West Fargo diversion. So the existing Cheyenne River diversion project is in place, providing flood, a 100-year flood protection for the city of Horace right now. We're proposing a win-win situation that would actually provide 500-year protection for the city of Horace with some minor tweaks in how the Horace diversion project interacts with the FM diversion project. So I know it's, it might be difficult to see, and I hope you have this in your packet, but if, if you'd like, I can dig down deeper into this map so everyone is clear on how things are currently operating. So right now, as you know, the, the Cheyenne River comes into the city of Horace through a box culvert system that basically meters the amount of water that can enter the city limits of Horace through the original river channel. The remainder of the water that cannot enter the box culvert then flows over into the Horace diversion channel and then ultimately into the West Fargo diversion and meets up with the Cheyenne River north of West Fargo. So right now, we're looking at, well, let me, let me stop there. I want to talk about how the diversion project impacts this arrangement right now. So when the diversion project is implemented, the Cheyenne River will actually cross the FM diversion utilizing an aqueduct structure. And that aqueduct structure right now is sized for, for existing conditions that would allow the same amount of water to, to go through the, the Cheyenne, original Cheyenne River channel. And then some of that will still be diverted into the Horace diversion. And, and the remainder of the flows would not be allowed across that aqueduct structure. It would spill into the diversion channel, the FM diversion channel, which those remaining flows would be, would be accepted by, by the FM diversion channel. A couple of other notable items that we're including in our proposal here that really probably impact West Fargo more than the city of Horace. The West Fargo diversion project is, was permitted under conditions that would no longer be allowed if it were to be constructed today. They actually shut down the entire river flow under flood conditions and divert the entire flow into the, the Cheyenne diversion. And by shutting off the river, it, it basically keeps it at a certain level. But they've found that the project has had some negative impacts with riverbanks sloughing because the water level's too low for too long. Also, the ecological impacts, there's no consistent fish passage through the Cheyenne River at that point. And so some of these changes that I'll, that I'll talk about in a second will, will change how that interacts. Basically, we're proposing removing the, the culvert, box culverts that meter the flow through Horace. We're proposing removing both of the positive control structures that West Fargo currently utilizes and maintain a constant river flow through the city of Horace and ultimately through the city of West Fargo. Now, the diversion channel will still accept some flows, but we will be able to meet, basically meter the flows that come across that aqueduct, to the extent that less flows actually enter the protected area than they currently do right now. So the, the benefit for the diversion project is that we get credit for environmental mitigation because as you can imagine, a project of this size has pretty significant physical impacts to the environment. We're required under federal law to mitigate those effects. So this would allow some of our environmental mitigation to occur. This proposal would also allow us to create a smaller aqueduct structure, which would ultimately save costs for the FM diversion and ultimately the, the taxpayers that are paying the sales tax for this project. And it would also, the benefit to Horace would be that you would have increased flood protection to a 500-year event from a 100-year event. And basically have certainty in the amount of flows that can come through the main stem channel of the Cheyenne. And it would be more consistent and at a more consistent level for folks in the future. So there, that's the box culvert there at the bottom, so that you can see meters the amount of flow that can, that can enter the, the river. As water rises against that box culvert structure, you do get more and more water flowing through. But ultimately, it spills over into the Horace diversion channel at a certain elevation. And so that, that, at that elevation, there's really no more flow that can enter the city of Horace at that point. Up by West Fargo, you can see on the right-hand side is the positive closure, so that's where they basically shut off the Cheyenne River. And they have no flow through the, through the Cheyenne River. And I think over the last 10 years, they've had about 900 days of zero flow in the Cheyenne River. And so once they shut that off, it spills over on the left-hand side of your screen, that sheet pile weir system. And we will be proposing with the removal of the positive control structure, actually lowering that sheet pile weir structure. And that lowers the river elevation at the tailwater end coming out of the Cheyenne River, out of Horace, which also has positive effects to make sure that the water level can't get above a certain, a certain level and back up into the city of Horace. And then that's existing structure at 12th Avenue North on the north side of West Fargo that we're also proposing to remove, that would allow the river to flow, flow through and, and not have any positive shut-off controls. So I'll just briefly skim through, through this slide. The proposed mitigation project would keep the river flowing open the entire time. We're able to meter the amount of water that enters the protected area and thus entering the city of Horace's limits to the extent that there would be less water coming in, in perpetuity with the diversion project in place. And you could probably just skip through that one. Oh, I, one note to hear on item number three. There is an OXPO that's contained within the city of Horace and we are working to restore that OXPO. It would be an engineered restored project. And so we'll be working with you folks to ensure that technically that meets your, your engineering department's requirements. But ultimately, that OXPO will be incorporated into the Cheyenne River once again. Right now, it's stagnant water, but it would be controlled. So the river would have to get to a certain level before the OXPO would start flowing again. But again, that's another ability for us to gain mitigation credits towards our impact.
What effects is the restoring of that OXPO going to have on the houses right along it?
It's a good question. We will have to be working with the neighbors with this proposed project to ensure that it meets their expectations. It should have minimal impact, if any, on their property.
They have a 150-foot setback which, which you're going to now infringe upon.
We'll have to take a look at those, those items to ensure that they'll meet city code and the, and the residents and the city's expectations, certainly. Yep, yep. So up there, you can see some numbers. The, the current aqueduct is designed for a minimum flow of 1,200 CFS, cubic feet per second. The current maximum flow of the aqueduct is 2,200 cubic feet per second. This proposal would allow us to create a smaller aqueduct with a maximum flow of 1,500 CFS. So if we did not do this change, we would continue down our current route with an aqueduct that would allow 2,200 CFS into the protected area. However, that 2,200 CFS would be split between the Horace diversion channel and the Cheyenne River and would basically mimic existing conditions right now. I think that's all we need on this slide. This is how the aqueduct structure will operate. So the flow on the Cheyenne River flows from bottom of the screen to the top. The rectangle is the aqueduct structure. Right prior to entering the aqueduct structure, there's a weir structure that basically allows flow into the diversion channel. So we, we are required to maintain flow across that, that aqueduct structure so there'll always be flow as long as there's flow in the river across that aqueduct structure. Now, one of the things we are implementing with this project and as a requirement of this proposal is the ability to provide positive closure on that aqueduct structure under emergency conditions. So if we have an ice jam on the variable weir structure and water starts to build up to a certain level that, that gets above our, what, what can be passed through the aqueduct, we do have the ability to basically stop all flow on the aqueduct structure, which would in turn stop all flow into the Cheyenne River and the Horace diversion as well.
And then all the water would flow into the diversion channel at that point?
Correct, or back up at that point. This, this would only occur under a pretty significant emergency situation where something happened to the overflow into the, into the diversion channel, ice blockage, something like that, something out of the ordinary. We don't anticipate that happening, but we are, we are putting this in as a secondary redundant measure so that we could shut off, well, all flows if, if need be. And, and right now, there is nothing in place with the Cheyenne, or the diversion project that would allow that to occur. So it, it would be an additional benefit under emergency conditions for the city. This is the OXPO area that, that we had talked about a few minutes ago. So that would not be flowing all the time. The river level would have to get to a certain level before there would be flow in there. But the benefit to the adjacent property owners, I suppose, is that they'd be able to have access to the river during certain times of the year, and it would be flowing through that OXPO.
What benefits that really give us by restoring that?
It gives the diversion channel environmental mitigation credits. And so, you know, we get credit for that amount of, of river being restored. And, and as long as it doesn't affect anybody in the city of Horace and as long as the city's open to the idea and the homeowners are open to the idea. If there's a homeowner that does not want this, you know, we'll, we, we won't, we're not going to force this project by any means. But it was an, an opportunity for us to be able to purchase that and restore some ecological benefit.
I could see maybe for stagnant water, moving, can you see that?
Keep it moving versus just hanging.
Definitely keep the mosquitoes out of there if the water was moving.
The only issue I have is, is when you create a deeper OXPO, you give more opportunity for bank erosion.
Yeah.
And you're doing that right behind people's houses.
That's correct. So there's going to have to be provisions for bank erosion with this project. So bank stability and the implementation of that OXPO, certainly. So one of the requirements before any of these changes would happen is that the diversion channel is completely constructed and operational. So that means the project is complete. At that time, then, we would remove the structures, but we would not remove it prior to the project being complete and certification from FEMA that, that the flood insurance rate maps have changed as a result. Then we would implement these changes. So everything's going to operate the way it does today until the project is fully complete. That's the only time we'd be able to make this switch and not have any risk of, of something happening. And so, you know, right now, just to give an estimate on project completion, we're anticipating taking P3 bids next fall and awarding the channel construction at the end of 2020, with channel construction beginning in 2021. The estimated completion for the developer for the channel portion is six years. So that would bring you to 2027. And then there's going to be at least two to three years after that before final certification runs through the federal process. So you're looking at probably final completion with flood insurance rate maps changing in 2030.
So 10 years from now is?
10 years from now would be a good, would be a good estimate. So the action I'm requesting tonight, if you so consider it, is to provide recommendation to the Southeast CAS, Water Resource District, supporting these environmental mitigation changes. Ultimately, it's Southeast CAS vote to, to do these changes because the project is owned and operated by Southeast CAS. So I'm available for any questions as you see fit?
The OXPO part of the project is not either way, whether this goes through or not. Any, either way, that OXPO is on the table.
That's correct, yep, yep. We'd like to propose that to the city. We'll go through development of what that'll look like, work with the adjacent landowners, work with planning and zoning to ensure that we can meet any requirements, bring that to the council once it's been vetted a little bit more for council approval for moving forward with that. with that.
And then the mitigation that you're talking about, you talked about that would help some of the sloughing that's happening.
It could potentially help with the sloughing and it would also lower the river levels that you see today. So you would have a maximum river level of, I believe it was 700 CFS.
13.
1,300 CFS each time, which right now you, what can you, it's about that.
Oh, no, I'm saying the river level right now, I believe, is around that 1,300 CFS.
Yep. So that would be the maximum it would ever get to. So for comparison's sake, you could go out and take a look at the river today. That would be about the maximum it would ever get to. Right now, the way it operates is it can get higher than, than where it's at right now.
And so do you, would you control that 1,300? Or is that just it-
It would all, it'll automatically be metered.
If it's high, it'll be 1,300.
Yep, the maximum would be that level and any more than that, it spills over into the FM diversion.
That's part of the aqueduct structure.
That's correct.
That's what you're going to be doing.
There's a maximum that the river can take and then whatever excess there goes into the Cheyenne diversion.
That's right.
And then when that reaches capacity, then it automatically, so it's just a three-tiered spill, spill wave system.
Absolutely, yep. There's a lot of redundancy built into that and actually the, the flows are going to be significantly reduced in the Cheyenne diversion channel, which will decrease operation and maintenance costs from today's values, which also provides a benefit for anybody paying an assessment for the Horace maintenance.
That was going to be my question, is the, the paying, you know, paying for this, is that, is most of this paid for by savings in some of the other construction costs? Or is there going to be additional costs that's going to be involved here?
No, so any cost will be included in the diversion project, but we're seeing a net savings with this proposal because we can create a smaller aqueduct structure. We don't have to support as much water going over the, the channel. We don't have to use as much concrete steel, all those other things. So that net savings then, that savings would be offset minimally by some of the other internal, you know, removal of the gates and those sorts of things. But by and large, it's a pretty significant net savings for us and in the millions of dollars. So it's, we worked really hard to ensure there was nobody impacted negatively by this proposed change and that really was a win-win situation for all.
Does this, this doesn't dramatically increase the size or anything of the Red, FM diversion?
It doesn't because right now the channel has retained a certain size. And so from Plan A, if you recall during the Plan B changes that, that occurred with the diversion project, we agreed to allow additional flows through the Red River up to a 37-foot riversage elevation. Originally it had been designed for 35-foot river elevation. Those additional flows at the 35 level were intended for the diversion channel. So when we changed the flow through the Red River and increased flows there, it decreased flows in the diversion channel, which allows us to accept more water from the Cheyenne and be able to do this change. So ultimately, this, this idea came out of the availability of additional flows in the FM diversion channel because of the Plan B changes.
So stupid question, but if you're stating that our overflow, because I always thought that you guys couldn't mix for environmental purposes, the water from the two rivers until they came together where they do or whichever, you are putting some in, kind of stupid, but why are we having a Cheyenne diversion then? Why don't we just dump all of the Cheyenne diversion into the Red River diversion? Is that, is there too big of an environmental impact or something? Or is that sending you through a whole series of additional things you got to go through?
It, it would because these projects are permitted at the federal level as far as environmental. This was a concept that we floated past, the Corps of Engineers and all the regulatory agencies came in fish. And originally they said they didn't like this proposal because they, they, but they, and it, this really gets into the technical specifics. They didn't like it because the velocities over through the aqueduct were, were a little high for the fish apparently. So it had nothing to do with flood, flood protection or anything. It was, you know, increased velocities. But now they've kind of changed their tune because they see that restoring the Cheyenne River and ensuring that there's always flow through there instead of having the West Fargo portion blocked off is a pretty significant benefit to the environment to maintain, you know, biological fish, you know, passage through there at all times. So they've kind of changed course on us and due to the changes of the plan, that Plan B freed up capacity for us to be able to make this change. It really, they're on board now and then they're, they're willing to work with us on getting this permitted, so.
Okay.
It's a good question though, but it's a pretty complex system and the FM diversion makes it even more complex just because it's intercepting so many rivers. The peaks are different on all those rivers during flood events. And so there's, there's a lot of intricacies in how the Cheyenne diversion, the FM diversion and the Cheyenne River all kind of work together. But ultimately, the, the Cheyenne diversion is still needed under this, under this project. Yep. But you would, you are getting redundant protection. You would have to have basically two diversions fail to see any sort of significant flood event happen in Horace.
Well, I like that you have that emergency closure. I mean-
And then that's a third redundant thing that we could, we could shut off all flows if absolutely necessary.
Because without that potentially, the red water could start, I mean, a horrible situation stops that.
During our, what we're calling a probable maximum flood, it's a flood event that's approximately six times the size of the 2009 record flood. That is basically what the diversion can handle, the diversion project can handle. So it's, it's a pretty significant flood event and so we're running scenarios to see what, what sort of problems we might have. But ultimately, the entire metro area with this project is going to be protected to a 500-year-plus level. And I don't have the exact numbers off the top of my head as far as frequency, but a pretty, pretty small frequency event. If we had a flood of that magnitude, the entire Ritter Valley would, would be wiped out, so. And we would still have a fighting chance.
Okay. Anybody else got any other questions?
Boston?
I don't know. I don't see a reason why we wouldn't proceed with-
I guess it's the support, right? The Southeast Cass.
It would be a resolution of support, yep. And just, just so for your knowledge, I know it doesn't weigh on your decision, but I was just at the West Fargo council meeting and, and they did vote to support it as well. But if either Horace or West Fargo were not in support, we would not do this and we would continue with the current plan, so.
I don't see any problem. Well, the cost impact is, you know, that there is, you know, at this point, we don't believe there's a cost impact. Granted, there's a lot of things that can change between now and then, so this is really just a letter of support. So this, this engineering design is going to change 50 times between now and when we start, you know, constructing any of these structures. So I don't see any reason why we would support, so.
And a council member, I might, I might add as well that we, before we did any move forward with this, we would bring a memorandum of understanding in front of the city so that everything is clearly laid out as far as costs, who's paying for those, which will be the diversion, and provisions for the emergency closure of, you know, we wouldn't be able to just go close that unless there was a significant event. But we need to be able to formalize that with you guys. So there'd be an MOU between the diversion authority and the city of Horace directly related to the operation of, of the Cheyenne River.
I'll make a motion to draft a resolution, letter of resolution to support the FM diversion, Cheyenne River mitigation concept plan.
Okay, so Brian makes a motion. Can I get a second? Okay. Don't say Chelsea, guys. All right. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Passes.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it and please feel free to reach out at any time if you have any questions.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Jim, you're up.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Council. Quick little update today. We don't have half the stuff that we normally do on the first Monday. We'll just go through some of the high points. The transportation alternatives application for the Phase Two, the shared use path along Conroe 17 is complete. I sent the council member Johnson for her review and comment today. It is due to MetroCog by next Wednesday, so we have time to get that in and done. Tara Gardens, we've got the final affidavit of payment to the subcontractors from the contractor today, so we have the project initiation and acceptance form. The project was inspected by city staff, myself and the contractor on October 12th. We did approve the work except for a valley gutter on Park Drive that stated in here irrigation system startup, couldn't start it up because it was frozen out. Didn't want to start it, the pump to dry it out. And then there's some seeding emulching of some minor areas that need to be touched up, but the contractor has agreed to those areas on the final review and acceptance. So it is in, we do have it in a document form, so.
And you just got to get that closed out next spring, right?
We'll touch on these things next spring, yep, when we can, when we can get the, when the weather cooperates for that. So that project, you will have, the final quantities have been sent to the contractor for his review and sent to the subcontractors for their approval. And I would anticipate here, probably the next week, we'll have the final balancing change order and probably a semifinal estimate. I don't think we'll be able to, we'll find out the next one after that. So that project is moving along. Adelman addition came up at the last meeting. Resident up there had some issues with, with drainage. We did send a survey out there. We did shoot all the ditches. Just got these today, so you don't have them in your packet, but there are some areas that can be improved upon. Not real sure about the feasibility, been able to do it this, this fall yet. There's, there's some constraints as to the construction to clean out of the ditches that might not be able to be done this fall. So I'm going to visit with a couple of local contractors and see if there's, if there's anything we can do for it and we'll look at these a little bit more, but this time of year, it's, it gets expensive to do some of this work.
Well, at this point, there's still standing water back there.
There is. There's standing water there and there's standing water in a lot of places, so. I guess I can give you these since I did-
That's the issue is that come next spring, if there's more water, is it going to cause, is it going to cause other issues with, with the homeowner damage?
The dash line is what's currently there. The red line is what I had put out there as a most clean-out element, so just kind of give you an idea. This has been set in stone yet, but just got these profiles today.
Do you see them, any of these making significant impacts?
No, because they're really flat to start with. This is, this is not self-run.
Cleaning them a little.
Yeah. This one here, the profile numbers correspond to on the other side there, call out which one goes where. So you take a look at that. There are some areas that will be approved, but there's not a lot, there's not a silver bolt.
So somewhere actually low, that's why there's water pooling, because it's actually low.
Yep, you'll notice that in profile, profile two for sure has a low spot, three has a couple, and then four right off, right off of the-
The biggest area of concern was profile one, right?
One, yeah, yep.
And because it's such a long run.
We think, or I think by looking at this, we can probably take off an average of six inches, six inches in there, but I, there, there is going to be some variability, variability with that. We did make some improvements to 76th Avenue in preparation, knowing that there's trouble in Adelman's, but this, the, I guess the correct way would have been to put the storm sewer in as part of that project like we had proposed and it was voted down. So I'll keep, I'll look at this again, talk with some contractors, see if there's anything that can be done this year. If not, we'll probably have to reevaluate it in the spring. As you can see, it does generally flow. There are, it's just flat, so there are spots that hold water. But overall, it does go downhill where it needs to.
Yeah, Russ, what's up?
I think, I think the long-term fix for this is when 63rd probably goes up east of them and 66th comes in west of them, that we, I'll have to get the engineer to nod on this, that we reach in from both sides with storm sewer. We're not running storm sewer whole, through the whole place, but just reach in in probably a few locations, you know, from each direction and, and get them well without tearing everything up in there.
Yeah. Yep. That is certainly the east side.
Certainly the east side.
And that would require actually 63rd running up there.
Yes, yep. Could you almost take the same approach you did in our development and put some pipes just at some points that drains into those pipes and into the storm?
No, because I'd have to look at it some more. I, I, I-
Don't have to.
Not a, yeah, let's not. I will say that profile three was improved this summer. That would be the, the left side of Brinley Boulevard or the west side of it was improved this summer. I had talked to the landscaper who was hired by those residents to do some work. And that generally does flow downhill. But like the valleys or the, yeah, the valleys just hold, hold water when it's so flat, so.
Well, the area between profile three crossing Brinley.
Yeah, that's-
Is that, there a culvert underneath there?
No, that's, it's a, it's a valley gutter on top of the road. It's a valley gutter through the road, yeah. So-
So is that where the issue is, where it's cooling off?
No, the biggest issue is on profile two. So profile two comes all the way back and into that cul-de-sac and it holds water in that cul-de-sac. And that's right where the resident lives. She lives right in that, right in that, right above the profile two is her-
That's been the one since day one.
Yeah, and you can see that one has the biggest, the biggest dips in it. That one is the least consistent of them all. So unfortunately, it's a, it's a lot of fill section in there to get the water up, kind of push the water. But as you can see on the front here, I mean, you drop, it's flat, it's flat here, drop four tenths here, drop another two tenths there. I mean, we're dropping like this much in hundreds of feet and then we're going to that much.
The thing is technically that profile two is, that's their property.
It's a drainage easement along there because there is a-
Is that our right of way?
It's not necessarily right of way, but you have the drainage easement. There is a valley gutter that it's supposed to go out that way. So the street does, does go out that way, so.
But the, the challenge is, is just what happened in our development is that's perfect when you build the development and then everybody comes in and builds a house and each of us do our, do our landscaping and we may put a little bit in, or it's raining while our grass is growing and we get sediment put in the bottom of these drain valleys and sooner or later you got to go clean them up.
And some of these are so flat.
And that's not an issue of the city.
If you dump your grass in there or blow your grass in there, it'll block flow. I mean, there's just pretty, this one's got six cents. You can see there's, this, some is on the front. So I guess what I'll tell you on that is we're, we're working on it, some more. I just not sure it's going to be cost-effective to do it this, this springfall. So we'll keep pushing on with it and-
But there, there is some work out that homeowners are planning on profile three. That you said that they're all-
No, they already did.
They already did.
Yeah, and that's improved. So that's this area left of the right, of the road shoulder, that area, and that generally does flow. That, that does flow, so.
So profile two would be the, the highest priority and then profile four.
I think two and four, yeah, but if you touch two, you got to do one and one is 1,300 feet. That's a long run.
Yeah. Six inches would help over that long run, especially with some of the high spots that are along there. All right.
Constructibility on this gets to be a challenge too because there are some mound systems and septic tanks that are put right up to the property line, so that's something we're taking into effect too.
But I agree. At this point, it's not cost-effective for us to try and fix this now, so.
I mean, just-
Maybe do we do a communication on those residents' email or something, just let them know that we'll, is there, and ask some action?
I have received a couple of phone calls. I went and visited with one of the residents last week. I do have these, all this, I do have all of our survey shots in a Google Earth form, so if you wanted, you can get on it and pick each one of them. These are just strategic ones. I can send that to you. I've sent it to a couple of residents out there, so they have it just to look through. I've sent it to a couple of residents out there, so they have it just to look through.
From an action plan going forward that, that they know that we're not really going to take any action at the, at this point.
I can prepare a memo for the council and we can distribute it.
I'm just thinking we could, should get some notification off to our residents.
Once Jim is done with his review, maybe have a better idea of if there are other options. You know, ultimately, we said, like we said before, he said tonight and we said previous meetings, the storm sewer option was the best option. That was why it was vetted and brought forth. Uh, our hands are somewhat tied on this, but once we have a thorough, or he has a chance to go through it thoroughly and say, here's what it is, then I think it'd be appropriate to, whatever, you could just give a recap saying, here are your options.
Yep. Right? All right, memory lane and the ditch. I guess you want to call it flooding or the river backup into the ditches. The river has gone down. It appears to be continuing to go down. Not all of the water's out of the ditches yet, but a lot of it is, most of it is. So we'll be able to get in there now and get some good measurements and, um, structure to make sure we can do something with it for control.
Biggest concern is the storm water freezing up in the culvert, so is that getting out of there?
It, it appears to be, there is ice on the, on the sides that has slumped in and it's collapsed and it's flowing out of there. So, um, I didn't get a chance today to run out there, take a look at that manhole, see how much water's in there or not. But it is on the downward, downward trend. So once that water gets out of there, we'll make sure to get in there and see what's going on. And then the other thing I had, you've been invited to a thank you sponsored by Interstate Engineering tomorrow for four to six at the fire hall. Uh, way of kind of thanking the community and everyone for putting up with a bunch of construction this summer, so. Four to six at the fire hall. Come by, harass me.
Just remember you asked for it.
I exactly.
You opened that up.
You just said it on the internet, so.
Mute, 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 mute. Too late, so, um, that's all that I have for tonight.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Hey Brent, what do you got?
A couple items. One, the resolution of good standing for permits. This is just an idea I've talked about with the mayor a little bit and I'll be working with Lucas on it. Um, is developing a resolution to where if, let's say an individual, like a builder or somebody wants to take out a permit for building a house or a shed or a deck or whatever, they'd have to be in good financial standing with the city, so they can't have outstanding wire bill. They can't have outstanding debt for other building permits, things like that, in order to be able to get their permit. So just one way of making sure, cleaning up how we've operated with those, so we're not incurring, letting them proceed with other tasks before they get done with their other business of paying their bills. We've had that happen with some permits recently where builder wanted to ask for us to do some work, uh, plan reviews and submit their permits. And then afterwards they said, no, we don't want to do that. We don't want to do, we don't, we don't want to do those houses now. And we incurred expenses tied to it, so in order for them to get a permit, they would have to cover the cost of the plan review. Before that, so we're just making sure we're able to cover our costs.
This is just editing the current resolution that we have?
We don't have a resolution here towards this. Not, not for this.
Oh, okay, all right.
We have other resolutions tied to like late fee, we have a resolution tied to late fees and fees. This is just a statement saying that you have to be in good financial status of the city in order to be able to get a permit.
That's what I was wondering, are you just modifying that existing?
No, this will be a new one.
Okay.
So you'll see that at upcoming council meeting. I just wanted to give you a heads up, it's something that's being worked on. Um, another item is Seventy-Second Street or by, uh, Country Acres, that area. We're having some issues with dust, so we're trying a different approach to try to tackle some of that dust in the future. So if you drive down there, you see it looking black. It's because we put asphalt millings, basically crushed up asphalt on the road. And we're seeing if that'll help with the dust control in that area, because we've had some, quite a few complaints to dust control. Uh, with asphalt milling, sometimes it works great, sometimes not as much. But when it does work, it could really knock down that dust and you don't have to come back over and over with that. The other advantage of that is it doesn't soften your road as much like what we were experiencing before. So, um, we're testing that out in that, that location. Hopefully that'll work out and help knock down dust for those reasons. It doesn't always work, so I stress that we're looking at different areas. Uh, sometimes it works great, sometimes it doesn't. So that's why we're just experimenting in this area, see if we could do something different about softening that base. City of the Year signs have been posted. We got those in the mail today, so they've been put up.
And they look good.
Also Christmas lights. Uh, we have Christmas lights on the north side of Casey's, stretching to the north towards the roundabout. Uh, those have not been up because we've had some power supply issues along with those new streetlights for the outlets. And Jim has been working and Public Works has been working with Northern Improvement.
They were on tonight.
They were on tonight?
Yeah, they fixed it on Friday morning.
So, because we were having some issues even through the weekend.
Yeah, Friday they came along and got it fixed.
So that was the reason why they weren't, you know.
We figured we'd be just trying to, tempting mother nature with lighting the Christmas lights before Thanksgiving.
Yeah, I had more excitement towards it, so. Anyways, a lot of positive feedback from the community on that. We're excited about that and glad we're able to work with Lions Club to be able to get that to happen. Uh, the last item I had is within this year's budget, we do have, uh, thirty thousand budgeted for a vehicle. Granted, this has been identified in the budget, um, to give us a little bit more wiggle room in case a vehicle, we're working on getting bids or pricing for the vehicle. If it does come in a little higher, asking the council for approval if we go up to thirty-five if needed. I don't think we're going to need it, but that way we're able to keep moving forward on that project if council is receptive to that. Uh, general fund is looking fairly healthy for this budget year, uh, due to our high amount of permits. Um, also we've been trying to keep our expenses down. You may have also noticed in the income balance sheet state, balance sheet statement and income statements, it shows that our utilities are up for dollar amount. It's because we have not put money towards capital improvements in water sewer this year, hardly any, um, that we wanted to. Because we wanted to see where the water rates truly fell. Also, uh, all the, those new homes helped with, uh, kicking up those utilities. We'll talk more in depth in that later on, or at next council meeting probably. But I want to give you a heads up, that's why we had that increases and that rates are actually covering the expenses. It's because we had this extra revenue stream, because we didn't spend on capital like we wanted to. And then also we wanted to, we had the additional permits. But anyways, back on the vehicles, if council is, uh, receptive to that or would like to, us to do that, we go up to thirty-five. Like I said, our goal is to stay within thirty, but I just want to make sure we have the flexibility so we don't have to wait additional weeks beforehand in order to get that vehicle ordered in this budget year.
Again, what was the purpose of the vehicle?
This vehicle would be primarily used for building inspector. Uh, we added additional building inspector. If the building inspector's not using it, let's say Public Works staff or a staff is going off to a training, it gives us the ability to have a vehicle to go there. Yep, so primarily building inspection. Uh, we're looking at most likely like a crew cab truck or a mid-sized SUV would be most likely what we would look at. So. But we're looking for council support. If you want to go thirty, if you want to stay right at thirty, we'll stay at the thirty. But if we have the flexibility, thirty-five, it does give us, we're going to try to get as reasonable as we can anyways. But I haven't seen vehicle pricings for a couple of years now on state contracted, or state contract pricing.
I'll make a motion and accept if they will put through the. Dave makes a motion.
I'll second that.
Okay. Right, this is second, let's call it. Dave, Chelsea, Brad.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Okay, I will keep you posted on what route we go.
You're intending to get that vehicle, yeah, in next month?
Yes, tackled before the end of the calendar year, uh, slightly, it's this budget year, so. That's all I have.
I got one for you.
Yep.
Judge Ship.
Judge Ship, she, she has completed her orientation, is my understanding, and going through her mentorship. I think she just recently completed that, but I'll be following up with her soon on that. Uh, but she is, she has to go through so many hours of mentorship with another judge, uh, watching how they handle their court cases. Uh, that's just what they do in North Dakota and a lot of other states, I believe. But she has to go through that mentorship part and then we should be able to kick off with that. My goal would be as soon as possi, obviously as soon as possible, um, guessing it'll probably be by the new year, we'll have that in place, is my expectation.
Just a rough idea, so we kind of have an idea.
It's a good question, do we have any, uh, backlog of cases, cases for review at this point?
Court cases.
Do we have any court cases?
Haven't been able to, those go to the county if they were to.
Right, I, I didn't know when, do we have to notify the county when that switch over happens or we will take that over? So notification happened, you know, sometime December.
Yeah, you'll have to set up your whole process, because you don't really have one right now. So once she does start, it's going to be initially just.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, is that something that we should be doing before?
We are, we're working, we're talking with the sheriff's department, like we're reviewing the tickets, uh, for example. Uh, once she has her mentorship done, then we'll probably be working, uh, to, to identify if there's any tweaks we need to make in the process or establish those processes. But it'll, it'll take a few months probably to get all that squared away. But by the time we have actual cases going through that court, we should be in decent shape.
Lucas?
And our firm does prosecution for West Fargo and then we helped Morehead just transition because in Minnesota, the county typically does municipal prosecutions for the cities. But Clay County, uh, couldn't keep up with it, so they, so now Morehead does, does that with Barnesville, uh, Delworth and Clinton, I believe. Uh, and so we helped them set that up and were their backup, but they have an actual in-house attorney for their prosecutions. So we can help with that.
Okay, just as more to get set of a timeline, so we can start anticipating when this is going to start coming online and, um, okay. All right, um, we'll move on then to portfolio reports. Uh, for me, got, been invited to a Department of Transportation meeting tomorrow afternoon. I'm not sure if I'm going to be able to make it, but I'm going to try. Worked out in the way here the last couple of weeks and so, we'll have to see. But, um, they're going to have a few people get it up and kind of give a presentation as to some of the different, uh, things that are currently going on in the DOT and some of the things we can anticipate coming here over the next couple of years. So I'm going to really try and get out there and we'll see what happens.
Just the North Dakota DOT?
Yeah, North Dakota DOT. On Wednesday, I have our land management meeting with the diversion at three o'clock. I'm going to try and get to that one too, so see what happens with that. But I'm kind of curious as to where they're going with that. Uh, that's all I got. Have you met with the AGC yet? Pardon? Have you met with the AGC yet, Association of General Contractors? No, not yet. Okay, because you had called me that you wanted, you were going to meet with them? Yeah, I should look at when that's, it's coming up here in December, I think. Yeah, that's what I thought, just in case you need anything.
December sixth, I believe.
I will be putting together some summaries for Shelby on the projects, so I can. If we need to elaborate on some of those for you, we can. Yeah, we should probably, yeah, all right, I'm going to mark that down here. Okay. Knew it was coming up first weekend or first couple of weeks in December, but, okay.
That'd be December tenth, just checking.
December tenth, okay. Okay, yeah, we'll get, I'll do that with Jimmy, okay, I'm done. Dave, what do you got?
Uh, my only thing is I'm hoping, you communicated the time I got to the Metro Cog meeting this Thursday, correct?
Thursday at four, Policy Board.
Last time I was out of town when they wanted to, just last week, so I'm looking forward to be able to go with this time.
Cool.
And, uh, did we have Keith start today, correct?
Yep.
So, he's a full-time employee.
What's his last name?
Ashim, okay, hard to pronounce for me. Ashim, yeah.
So when it gets. At this point, he, he'll, he's still learning, but he's been doing building inspections for the city already, so he's kind of hitting the ground running. So that's, that's a positive thing, so.
Keith has been our backup inspector through more engineering for, ever since we've had the, not a big inspection agreement with them. Uh, he's been doing the primary residential, primarily the main inspector for residential inspections and horse past three, four months. So, uh, more engineering to span in their inspection services, uh, by the end of the year or mid-December. Uh, we were able to bring Keith on.
So, to ask one more question on that, does that mean that, well, he's been doing not only residential, but some of the commercial and industrial inspections as well? Is he certified to do that?
He can do some very big commercial stuff. Our goal would still be that we would use a more.
Still use more to do commercial stuff.
Yeah, for smaller scale, commercial, industrial, we'd be able to handle internally. Uh, larger scale, like the schools, for example, we'd outsource that. Yep.
And then Barrett starts?
Barrett starts on Monday next week.
Okay.
He was at the last planning and zoning meeting, correct, I heard?
Yep.
And Barrett is the.
New city planner, meeting development director.
Yep.
Sure.
So I think that's all I have. Perfect. Chelsea, what do you got?
Uh, well, some of, some of you noticed my glamour shots.
Yes, we did.
I'm so photogenic. But Shelby came to that food commission meeting and they spotlighted Horace and what we have going on. And it was, I think, really great for her to go because they talk a lot about, um, like health and wellbeing topics, which I think it kind of swept under the rug as being not, not as important. But I think they're kind of the foundation of, uh, a good community. So she got to see that and what we, what we talked about there, which was great, because those are types of things I like to incorporate into the horse happenings. Um, and, and think about when we're doing all, all this and dealing with all this new growth. Um, and then we'll have our event planning meeting on Thursday. It'll be a week earlier because of the holiday. Hopefully we get, uh, some more interest if anybody wants to come out and just listen or, you know, put in their two cents, we appreciate it.
It's this Thursday, right, just to.
Yep, Thursday at seven thirty here at City Hall. And I think that Christmas event is going to be a, a really fun event and just kind of kicking it off this year for the, our first annual. And I think also I was going to say the, you know, the attention that the holiday lights got on Facebook, I, I think speaks volumes of, of what people really care about and beautifying the city and making sure that the growth that happens, you know, is well considered and, and in those types of areas is important to the, to everyone.
I got a lot of positive feedback once those lights came on, they got made their whole color.
And the timing.
The banners too, the banners.
Yeah, I told you the, like the banners.
Just dress it up.
The timing with the really hot frozen two.
Yeah, and considered that, but.
Well, I had one, I had one resident calling and wondering why there weren't any in front of Arrowhead, so he already named it, uh, Snowflake Gate, so he wants an investigation. Mr. Hoffman, if you're listening.
Yeah, thank Bob, appreciate it.
It was funny, I, I'll give him credit for that, that was.
Well, and, and something to note is there is plan, you know, more lights in the future and, and keep expanding it.
Yep. Obviously they have to go down Seventy-Sixth.
Someday.
Dave, like I did mention, we could put the old decorations there if you'd like.
You should just put some up in, in that area, just.
Just Cubs, right?
We can lift them up till then like June.
Yeah.
And I do want to highlight, uh, those banners are very deceiving how big they are. Uh, in comparison, they're almost the size of the door. So when you hold them up, they're pretty good sized. They do not look that big when they're hanging up though.
But they're nice.
Yeah, they look great.
They're very deceiving.
Good selection.
I believe they're lower, about five feet tall.
Well, the, the snowflakes are about five feet tall as well.
Exactly, yeah, snowflakes are five feet tall too.
Yeah.
They look twice as big when they're lit.
I know, they look, they look kind of weird with nothing, you're like, oh, what's that? Then they light up and you're like, wow, this is. So I do have a question, because it's just a, for that type of stuff, do we have or are going to build like permanent storage areas so that these things stay, you know? Especially the snowflakes can be hung up in some boxes or something that won't get damaged during year after year, since we've spent some.
Yeah, we'll have to guys work on that. We also, right now we put them on top of, of Little Mezzine in the. Lil' Mezzine in the Public Works area, but we'll have a different area probably for them, so, yeah, what I've done before is, uh, we've found ways where we just make, set up where they hang up along the wall, and we just drape them or with like a blank, with a, like a tarp or something, just to keep the dust off them, and that works out pretty well, too, so.
Chelsea, anything else?
No.
Okay, good, right, right.
Uh, a couple items, uh, need to get working on finalizing or we're updating the capital improvement plan for 2020, uh, we need to go start through that effort, so, um, this is now the time for your wish list things, or things that we need to start putting on the list that aren't on there now, uh, plus going through those items that were on the list that we need to get to, so we just gotta put them all on the list and get it, and build a priority of all those things that we wanna work through and direct Jam and the rest of the team to start building the plans for, uh, over the winter, because we've gotta get that priority in place, so, and ideally, we'd like to have that done before the end of the year, so we'll be starting a series of meetings and try and collect that information in the upcoming weeks, uh, the other point, Brent, I know you have started some, uh, rate analysis, utility rate analysis work, uh, we'd probably get some more meetings in earnest to, to review that, uh, and start doing a deeper dive on, on making a recommendation and, and timing, of when, you know, if there are any changes, uh, we need to get that communication out for residents and, to get feedback and so forth, so, we've gotta, we've gotta make some decisions, some strategic decisions going forward here, so we gotta, we gotta keep that ball rolling.
When, when you see the next council meeting budget information, that'll be very, very telling for you, not telling you exactly your rate, but telling you our, our situations, so you'll be able to, and you can see it already in the financials for this month, uh, financials to date, uh, you can see that if you dig into there, I encourage you to dig in, just take a look and see, but it'll show you where we're sitting.
I did notice that what is our current, uh, I mean, have we been making progress on the, the list of delinquent accounts and late fees?
Yes.
Is that shrunk over the past couple months now?
Over the past couple months, it's dropped down significantly, we've had, when we first started doing it, we had well over a hundred, a hundred fifty, um, it's dropped down drastically.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah.
Having Seventy-Eighth puts a focus on that helps, so that's a good thing, so. Right, so those are the two, I got for, okay, upcoming.
All right, anybody got anything else, or is, or create a motion?
I do have one question, I know he's probably worked on it, relates to the, the meeting we had, do we have that information organized and all to us that we can start reviewing or preparing?
Pardon?
The meeting, the special meeting we did on, on.
Yes, I'll have an email to you in the next day or two here.
Okay.
So.
And we'll have to plan to do the follow-up on that for soon here, too.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else, good job. Okay, Brian has a motion, can I get a second? Chelsea does a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There you go, you are done.